Good evening, everyone. My name is Ryan Blazek with Environmental Support Division of Eagle. I will be moderating the public hearing this evening. This is a public hearing for a proposed C on Swift Lane in Chickaming Township in Berryan County. In just a few minutes, I'll introduce other staff who are going to be participating in this public hearing. But before I do that, just going to go over some logistics. All right, probably the most important thing to go over for those of you who aren't familiar with our public hearing process. It's kind of going to be a two-part process. The first part of this hearing will be more of an informal public meeting, informational meeting. So there'll be a brief presentation on the application in project followed by a question and answer session. And then the second part will be at the actual public hearing part. And that'll be the part where you can make comments for the record, for the official record as part of this hearing. And then we're going to go also go over some other things like there are some other ways you can submit an official comment if you'd like. We are going to talk about where you can find other information and then who to contact with further questions. All right. And for those of you not familiar with the Zoom platform or haven't done one of these online with us before. Right now, all lines are muted during this webinar. We can, you can't, you can hear us, but we can't hear you. So all of your questions, when we have this question and answer session will be either in the Zoom toolbar, there should be a block where you can enter a question. And then we'll be reviewing those questions. And our panelists will be answering those. And then you also have the option to raise your hand when the time comes. So you'll be able to raise your hand. And we'll call on you to answer your question. Another thing you should be aware of is that we're recording this meeting. This will eventually be on our YouTube channel in a couple of days. You will receive a link to the YouTube channel where you can find this so that you can watch it again if you'd like. All right. At this time, I'd like to introduce two staff who will be participating in this meeting. Our public hearing, Zach Chamberlain and Kyle Alexander. So I'd like to welcome you both to introduce yourselves.
Everyone, I am Zach Chamberlain of the slides and I am an environmental quality analyst in the Kalamazoo District Office. And I am the staff person assigned to this file.
Kyle Alexander, I'm the district supervisor for the Water Resources Division, working Kalamazoo with Zach.
Thank you both for participating in the hearing tonight. I should also mention that kind of behind the scenes on the line, we had Jim Ostrowski, who is also with Environmental Support Division, who's kind of going to be just bringing the public hearing and doing some things behind this. So you may hear his voice from time to time. All right. And so this is kind of the part where we're going to start the informational session on the project. The applicant is going to be in our list of attendees. And what we'll do is we will unmute them. And the presenter today is going to be Mr. Phil Roseborough. And I'll see if I can locate Phil. There you are, Phil. It looks like you're unmuted. You just have to mute yourself on your end. Are you there, Phil?
Yep, you just got to unmute yourself, Mr. Rossborough.
Okay.
Oh, there you are. Excellent. So yeah, Mr. Rossborough is just going to give a brief presentation. Please try to limit it to 10 minutes maximum to kind of keep us on schedule. We're going to try to have this informational session wrapped up around 6:30ish so we can kind of stay on time for the public hearing and the official comments portion of this. I have your presentation here, Mr. Rossborough. And if you just want to let me know when to switch slides, I can do that for you.
That's great. Thanks. Thanks very much, Ryan. I'm a registered landscape architect for nearly 35 years and I've had the privilege of working with Randy Berlin and her late husband Melman for over a decade. I am serving in the capacity of project coordinator and appreciate the opportunity to provide a brief overview of our proposed solution for the bluff toe improvements at her residence in Lakeside in Chickaman Township. Also on the call this evening is Bill Weaver, coastal engineer from ACOM, who prepared the proposed design solution and natural resource consultant Dean Ray, who assisted in preparing the Eagle permit submittal. Bill and Dean can be made available for answers to any technical questions. If you want to get to our first slide, that would be perfect. Continue on one more, please. So by way of a brief history, Randy and Melvin purchased this property in the late 1990s. And in the background of this first slide, you'll see their primary residence under construction up on the bluff. And in the foreground, you can see the condition of the beach and dune when the original Swift Estate pump house shed structure was in place at the toe of the bluff. In the next slide, you will see the two of them on their beach with their property in the backdrop, the original pump house structure having been replaced in the same location with a new cabana structure. And again, notice the condition of the beach and dune gradually extending out far to the water's edge. This next slide will show the condition of the slope and the beach around the cabana in the late spring of 2020. Near-record lake water levels combined with a major storm in January of 2020 created the equivalent of a 240-year wave attack on this beach and dune. The existing cabana deck staircase and funicular structure are now being undermined and continue to be at significant risk of sliding and collapse. Our only objective is to protect these structures and prevent further erosion of the bluff that would place her primary residence at significant risk. It's important to note that Mrs. Berlin owns over 400 feet of beach frontage and our proposed solution only seeks to protect a third of that frontage, leaving the remaining two-thirds completely exposed to natural forces. So with that in mind, let's review this next slide. This is a planned view representation of our proposed solution. Highlights of the solution include 120 feet of vertical driven sheet pile wall structure support within steel H pile and wood lagging finish shown and represented by the brown line on the plan. The wall has two 10-foot returns on either end with gray granite stone embedded in the base of the bluff adjacent to the returns to protect the ends of the wall from any washout. The wall and active line of erosion is approximately 115 feet from the main residence. It's important to note here that the Swift Lane Homeowners Association is the owner of the beach directly to the west. The property line indicated with black dashes you'll see is just laceward of the proposed wall solution. This nuance and other limiting factors made the proposed vertical wall solution the only viable option to protect Mrs. Berlin's structures and implement any solution entirely on her property. We simply cannot build on a beach that we don't own. The next slide is a cross-section of the proposed solution, which shows the height of the wall at 594 feet, which is approximately two feet below the existing cabana floor. This section also shows the backfill of structural gravel and sand material behind the wall to support the existing structures. It is important to note that the proposed wall is sited at four and a half feet above the federal ordinary high watermark elevation and five and a half feet above the Eagle ordinary high watermark elevation and nearly 40 feet from the water's edge. Not to belabor the point, but the wall site is even three feet higher than the highest recorded lake level elevation in the last 100 years. The following slide depicts an aerial perspective of the finished proposed wall solution with the disturbed areas behind and at the ends of the walls being planted with native dune grasses. All of the natural tones were chosen to allow the project to blend into the natural setting. And as depicted in the slide, the coastline is uninterrupted and there's ample area between the proposed structure and the water line for beachgoers to walk unencumbered. Implementation of the project will be via barge across the Swift Lane Association beach. It should be noted that the association membership has had multiple opportunities to provide input into the design process of this project. This resulted in two approvals by the association. The first by the Architectural Review Committee of the Association for the Design and Material Finish. And the second by the Board of Directors of the Association and the overall membership approving the access across the beach in order to implement the proposed solution. Now, before concluding, we want to acknowledge that this proposed project is coming through the permit review process at a time when there is considerable debate within the township over beach revetments. While we believe we have clearly presented the nature of Mrs. Berlin's proposed plan, we feel it is equally important to point out what Mrs. Berlin's plan is not. In this next slide, you see a clear example of what Mrs. Berlin's proposal is not. In the background, a permitted massive stone beach revetment under construction at a property within the township and to the north of Mrs. Berlin's property. While this revetment was implemented to repair a significant bluff slump and to protect private property, this solution will obviously impede the coastline, interrupt public access through the beach and continually engage the lake water, creating impact on literal sand drifts. This next slide is a beach view perspective of the finished proposed solution. The point is simple. Mrs. Berlin's proposal will also protect her property, but it is a very simple, clean-lined and structurally sound bluff retaining solution well above the high ordinary high water elevations. Unlike the previous permitted massive stone beach revetment or a seawall project, which interrupts both public access and engage the water on a regular consistent basis with potential impact on literal sand drift, the beach and the coastline, Mrs. Berlin's proposed improvements will not. Not only has our own expert, Bill Weaver from ACOM confirmed this, but because of initial concerns of neighbors, the Swift Lane Homeowners Association also hired their own independent expert Stuart Koji to review our proposed solution and Mr. Koji concluded the same. So returning to this original slide, it's quite clear that the current situation is an eyesore and doing nothing is not an option. Our proposed wall solution will cover the eyesore and in the future, we expect that that wall will be back there in among the dune grasses, completely buried in and among dune sand once again overgrown while Mrs. Berlin's property and structures remain intact, protected by the proposed bluff toe retaining well. That is all we have for this evening and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Rossborough. At this point in the public hearing, we're going to open it up to questions to the attendees. And this is still kind of the informational session event. So what we'd like you to do is if you have a question, please enter. Please enter it in the question box, which you should see on your screen. You can enter it either through there or you can click the hand icon, the zoom hand icon, which is to reach your hand. And we can then call you with your question. And I also would like to invite Zach and Kyle back and we will start to go through these. And then also I didn't mention this before, but if there is somebody and I'm doing a quick scan on the phone and I don't see anybody on the phone right now.
Nope, doesn't look like we have any phone, right?
Nobody on the phone? Okay, awesome. So there is an option for raising your hand, but we don't have anybody at this point. So I will go ahead and start to go through the questions. All right. So I don't have any in the chat right now, but it looks like I do. There's one. Okay. So the first question is, has the applicant considered removal of the structures and rehabbing the slope?
I'm going to defer to Phil on this one.
No, the applicant has not.
Okay. The next question is how many properties comprise the Berlin Homeowners Association and is the association vote to move forward unanimous? I'm not sure if we have the information.
I'm not sure about that. I know it's a fairly small association, maybe seven or eight properties. I did receive a letter with the application giving approval of the project.
Okay. Let's go to, let's see here, we have some participants with their hand raised. So I will go to a couple, some of the attendees who have their hand raised. And let me see here. Jim, I'm not seeing, oh, here we go. Okay. So our first participant, it looks like our first attendee rather is Anthony Scherer. Looks like let's see, we are going to find you and unmute you and then you will be able to unmute your microphone.
Hey, Ryan, it looks like Anthony might not be able to be unmuted because he's got an older version of Zoom. Haven't run into that question yet. Can you unmute him?
Let me see here if I can.
I can't. So I think.
Saying it's unavailable. So I guess, Anthony, I urge you to put your question if you're able to in the boxed and then to it through there. So the next person here is Randy Berlin. Randy, it looks like you're unmuted on our end if you want to unmute your mic.
Okay, I'm unmuted now. What I wanted to say is answer that question for the person who asked for it, whether they know or not. The vote was seven to three.
Okay.
Of the association, that's a majority.
Got you. Thank you for providing that information. Okay. We have, stay on people who have their hand raised. Sally Bogart. Looks like you're unmuted on our end.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I am just going to answer a question you just asked, or if this is my time to speak.
No, sorry, you will actually have an opportunity later on to give your official statement. This is still kind of the informal question and answer.
Yes. So as Mrs. Berlin just said, the homeowners are very divided on this issue. A third of the board did not approve the project. A third of the Architectural Review Committee did not approve the project. And a third of the homeowners do not approve of this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. All right, I'll go back to the question box. All right. So the next question is the HOA ARC asked you to consider alternative solutions, including those that might require an easement from the HOA Homeowners Association. I'm assuming members and no alternatives were considered or discussed in particular sandbags or geo tubes. Can you explain why? So I guess explaining, I need a discussion on the potential alternatives.
I'll defer to Phil again on that one.
Ryan, the answer that I would give to that is that we did talk about that as a solution. And the question added, the question as presented adds an interesting word easement. At the time of those discussions, no easement was really an option for the association to grant the homeowner or the petitioner to construct that. So our, as I alluded to in the presentation, the, 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 the location of the property line being right where it was sort of dictated that we needed a solution that was only going to be built on her property. So, so this proposed solution, one of the factors and variables was it was to be constructed on her property.
Okay. The next question, and let's see here, was approval by association homeowners given prior to the subject of repentance and hard armoring getting the attention it has gotten over the past six months or so.
So I believe, I remember I received the approvals from the, from the the association back in December or January. Those should all be available on the My Waters page and there will be a link to the, to that page later in the presentation.
Got you. Thank you. Does the application, is referred to the applicant or application claim that the proposed wall is allowed under Chickaming zoning law?
There's no mention of the Chickaming zoning law on the application.
Okay. Well, proposal, I guess, will the proposal have any impact on the beaches to the south of the Berlin property?
I'm going to send that one to Phil again.
I think in the closing, one of the closing comments we made in our presentation was both are, both the design expert from ACOM and the association's own independent expert both concurred, I don't think anybody will say there will be no, both concerned that any impact would be extremely limited and minimal. And I believe Mr. Weaver's findings are part of the submittal as well.
Okay, thank you. And I've got a couple of questions here. It looks like they both relate to the Chickaming zoning ordinance and the hard armoring ban. If you could talk about that, I guess a little bit and how that relates.
I can answer that. So we are aware of the Chickaming zoning ordinance and that would include this structure as a hard armoring structure. Eagle still has an obligation to review this application under the applicable state laws. In this case, that is part 353, the Sand Dunes Protection and Management Act. And a good example I've been using a lot recently with some phone calls and things like that have been just because Eagle issued the permit in a wetland for a new house does not obviate the need for that person to go and get a permit from their local unit of government for building. So the same principle kind of applies here. We're going to review it under state laws and the township laws obviously still apply.
Okay, thank you. How high is the high watermark from the wall?
I'm going to let Phil fill in for that.
I believe in the presentation, we indicated that we sit at a, we sit at a point at a four and a half feet above the federal high watermark elevation, five and a half feet above the Eagle high watermark elevation and the approximate distance from that would be about 40 feet from the water's edge. I mean, that's going to fluctuate obviously, but that's a good, that's a good benchmark.
Okay. And then there's actually another question related to the application. And if, and this was touched on related to the township ordinance, but the question specifically, does township new ordinance override Eagle if Eagle approves of the application? So I think they're just looking for a little more.
Yeah, I think, I think Zach pretty much answered that question. I would just add that the question is why would Eagle consider approval for a revetment? So we have to consider every application that comes into us under state law and really you know, look at that application based on the merits of the application. And as Zach alluded to earlier, local ordinances, laws, regulations are always applicable.
And I'll also add, just given the project purpose, this project will require a special exception under the critical doing statute. And so things like project purpose, human health and safety, practical difficulty will be addressed during that process. And that information will also be available in My Waters once we get to that point in the application.
Got you. Thank you. Okay, so I have a couple more right now with, in the chat. And this one's been up here. There is a creek just south of the Berlin property. I'm concerned that the seawall and riprap in the area next to it will affect its meander path. Was this addressed?
So this was not in the application. I'm aware that there's a creek over there and just from past experience have seen creeks in the Lake Michigan coastline meander quite a bit. We are still early in our overall review process. And like I said earlier, we still have to go through a special exception as well as just a more thorough application review. So that will be considered during that time.
Okay, thank you. I'm actually, is anybody have their hand raised? I'm not seeing that. So I'll stick with the.
Got a couple of people hand raised.
Okay, yep, there we are. Okay, so we have a couple of people, the first person, Anthony Scherer. Was Anthony?
Yeah, he's, he's.
That's who we were having issues with.
Yeah, we still can't unmute you, Anthony, because it looks like it's saying that you have an older version of Zoom. So this is the first time I've come across this weird error. So you can type your question into the question box. Or I guess you could try to update your Zoom. I mean, to come back in though, I guess, just let you know that.
Anthony, my contact information will be on here. Additional questions. Tomorrow we can discuss.
Okay.
And Julie, I just muted Julie for you.
So Julie, you're muted on our end.
Yeah, actually I had a question.
Okay, you can, you can ask a question.
So I'm still unclear, is Eagle going to issue this permit if Chickaming prohibits this kind of hard armory?
So, oh, go ahead, Zach. I was just going to say, we've not made a decision at this point on whether or not we're going to issue a permit for the structure. And you know, that decision will be made in the coming weeks. And obviously things such as ordinances and the township's position will be taken into consideration when we make that decision.
Yeah. And I think, because this is not for a special exception, the statute does state that if the township objects to the issue of the special exception, the department shall not issue a permit.
All right, thank you.
All right, we're getting close to 6:30. So we'll take a few more. We'll be wrapping the question and answer portion up here shortly. Okay, so another question is who built and installed the gazebo and when was it built? I'm guessing that means the existing gazebo.
I'll defer to Phil on that one. I'm not sure.
I, I, I can say that it was sometime in the late 90s, near 2000. And I believe it was, you know what, I would have to defer to Randy on that exactly who constructed it.
Okay, it looks like there is another question somewhat related to it. Was, and I'm assuming this is related to the same gazebo, this is a beach cabana that you're aiming to protect constructed with the appropriate permits. And how is it able to be built given that it's significantly larger than the much smaller original shed show? Or this is related to the new structure?
I mean, I, if you're asking me, I can't, I can't respond to the nature of. The nature of permit applications twenty, twenty years ago. So, or more. So I, you know, I mean, I think it's. It was, it was a permitted structure. I don't know to the extent of, um, the variables that would have been implied at that point in time.
Got you. Thank you. Okay, and it looks like, I mean, it looks like. The remainder of the questions are related to what was already discussed relating to the, the ordinance. And we are out. Uh, of time for the question and answer session. And so what I will do then is, uh, this will be forwarded. Where staff, uh, question and, and, and answers so that they will have it. Or the questions rather that are provided in the chat. And we are going to. Okay, now we're going to move forward with the official public hearing portion of the hearing today. Uh, but before we do that, I just want to go over some other ways, my apologies, some other ways that you can submit an official comment. Through our My Waters, uh, application and database. You can provide your comments directly through that if you're familiar with the My Water system. Uh, and are able to use it, it can be made through there. By email at the email address listed here. Uh, and then by mail as well, um, at the mailing address listed here. So there are three, three ways that you can provide additional comments. You know, if you remember something after today or think of something or, or, or wanted to clarify and had some. Additional information to your statement, there's, there's some alternatives. Uh, and like I said, you can provide additional comments. Uh, the comment period, uh, after this public hearing will be open for ten days. So the public comment period, uh, will end on January fifteenth.
That should have been March twelfth. My apologies for not.
Oh, I think we jumped down. Okay. Oh, no worries. All right. So now we're at the, the public hearing portion of this. You know, I will go through, I guess, how we're going to run through this, uh, after the introduction statement. So I'll invite Zach. To give the public hearing statement to go ahead and giving. This part rolling. And again, this is going to be the part where you're giving your official, uh, statement or comments, uh, for the record for this, uh, application. So go ahead, go ahead, Zach. Whenever you're ready.
Thanks, Ryan. Um, if you haven't been to one of our hearings before, um, we have to read this, um, pretty long. Statement. It's about, you know, for ten minutes. So just bear with me. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Zach Chamberlain and I am the district representative in the water resources division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, also known as Eagle. I'll be serving as the hearing officer for this public hearing. Other Eagle Water Resource Division staff present tonight, my supervisor Kyle Alexander and coworkers Benzema and Kate Letterly. To describe how this is going to work, I'll begin with some background information about why we are here. I will then describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used. Following that, I will outline the procedures under which we will take your comments and then describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. It will then be time for you to provide those comments and we will spend the majority of the time tonight listening to those comments. At the end of the hearing, I'll provide a short summary in closing. By way of background information, the Water Resources Division is responsible for administering a variety of programs. That help protect inland lakes and streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes in the Great Lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling a lake stream or wetland, constructing a dam, constructing a marina. Placing shore protection or constructing docks and building a designated critical sand dune area, wetland or floodplain. The law governing those responsibilities is the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act nineteen ninety-four PA four fifty-one as amended, also known as act four fifty-one or for short the N R E P A. We are here tonight because we have received requests for a public hearing regarding the permit application from Ms. Randy Berlin, who proposes the following. Construct a steel sheet pile seawall for the purposes of shoreline erosion protection, including place a hundred and forty linear feet of steel sheet pile seawall. Of this total, a hundred and twenty linear feet are proposed shore parallel with two ten feet shore perpendicular returns on either side. Backfill the seawall with approximately a hundred and seven cubic yards of sand and gravel. Place approximately forty-four cubic yards of riprap in two areas on either side of the seawall with each area measuring approximately ten feet long, ten feet wide and five feet deep. Access, access to the site shall be via barge from Lake Michigan. In order for a permit to be granted, eagle must find that the proposed activities described in the public notice meet certain criteria set by part three fifty-three. Sand dunes protection and management of act four fifty-one. Under part three fifty-three, standing's protection and management, eagle is charged to make the following considerations. Quoting pertinent sections of the law, section three five three oh four subsection one G states. Subject, subject to section three five three one six, a permit shall be approved unless the local unit of government or the department determines that the use will significantly damage. The public interest on the privately owned land. If the land is publicly owned, the public interest on the publicly owned land by significant and unreasonable depletion or degradation of any of the following. One, the diversity of the critical dune areas within the local unit of government. Two, the quality of the critical dune areas within the local unit of government. And three, the functions of the critical dune areas within the local unit of government. However, when a special exception is approval is necessary, which is the case in this application, then section three five three one seven subsection one also applies. That section reads similarly but includes additional language relative to a determination of practical difficulty and assuring human health and safety. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the application opportunity to provide information that eagle can use in making the decision whether or not to issue a permit. Please recognize that eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that eagle must use in making a decision. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the project. We will be happy to make note of your position, but please understand. The eagle is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether or not there is widespread support or opposition to the project. In just a moment, I will outline the procedures we will use for taking your comments. But before I do so, I need to mention that this noted, or that the notice of this hearing. Was published in the Herald Palladium on February sixth, twenty twenty-one. To ensure that this hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we will follow these steps. First, we will call the names of those who have indicated that they would like to make a statement. We will call you in the order in which you registered for the hearing. Please remember, eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria we must use in making a decision. If you have questions and there's time at the end, depending on which is more appropriate, we will either allow the applicant to respond or eagle staff will respond. Second, we will then call on those who have indicated during this session that they would like to speak. If you have written comments or materials that we'd like to, to submit, please email them to me or upload them into my waters or send them to me via US mail to the Calhousie District Office. When all comments have been completed, we will ask if anyone else would like to make a statement. When your name is called, your microphone will be unmuted. As you begin your comments, please state your name and any group or association you may represent. Each person will be given three minutes to make their comments. We will indicate to you when you have one minute. Please begin wrapping up your comments and end with a me allotted time. If need be, we will indicate when your time has ended. I ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Please recognize that eagle staff is here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments in the proposed project and to listen to those comments. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be a part of the information eagle will consider. In making its decision whether or not to issue a permit on the proposed project. The public comment period for this public hearing is open for ten days from the date of this hearing, ending on March twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Additional information and comments submitted in writing during the ten day public comment period will also be considered in eagle's decision. Following the close of this public comment period, eagle will continue to evaluate the application in order to make a decision to either issue a permit for the proposed, for the project as proposed. Or with modifications or send a letter of denial. You may find out what the decision is by checking the eagle My Waters website. Thank you for your attention. We will now begin calling the names of those who have indicated that they would like to make a statement.
I thank you, Zach. Yeah, so as Zach had mentioned, I have a list of, of people who would like to make a statement that they indicated during registration. We are going to start with those and I'm just going to go straight down the list. You'll have three minutes to provide a statement. Uh, you know, I will give you about a minute, one minute's time is up. Uh, one minute time is left, so you can start to think about what you want to say and, and wrapping it up. And so I will identify the person who's up, gonna speak next, and then I also identify the person who's on deck. So you can think about. Uh, what you want to say, um, since you're going to be up next. The way we will do this is, um, when I read the name, uh, Jim is going to, uh, unmute you on our end. And then you can unmute yourself. Uh, and then you'll be able to make your statement. So at this time, um, you know, we will go ahead and, and start. Uh, and one other thing I should mention, we can also take, uh, statements by phone. So you're welcome to call in. You know, after we get through these. These. People who would like to, who have already identified they would make their statement. After we get through that, we're going to open it up for everyone else to raise your hand and make a statement. Um, and we can, uh, identify those, uh, folks at that time. So. Uh, to go ahead and get started, the first person that I have on the list is Phil Rose, Phil Roseborough.
I don't know if Phil's got a statement or not, because he presented, so.
Got you.
Yeah, I think that's why he selected that.
Got you. Okay, now we have, uh, so next up is, uh, Julie Glavin and then after Julie is Sally Bogart. So Julie, uh, we're going to be unmuting you, uh, and you can give your statement. All right, you should be able to unmute yourself, Julie.
There you should be. Can we hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, uh, good evening. I am Julie Glavin and, uh, my husband Dan Glavin is with me and he. Concurs with everything that I say. Our residence is thirteen seventy, thirteen seven four one Suns End Lane, Harvard. We are, uh, directly across from the Cherry Beach. Area and the Glavins have had a presence in the area since the mid eighteen hundreds. In, but I will speak more specifically to, uh, to this. In the early nineteen seventies. The, uh, owners of beach property just to the south of us. Put in a seawall. And. It lasted eighteen months. It failed. We never saw it again until this summer. When all of it was uncovered and it impeded beach access. So, uh, the beautiful, uh. Drawings that we saw this evening, I've seen those. I, I saw that seawall previously and. I, I support that this is not the way to, hard armoring is not the way to solve this situation. Believe in something other than that as, uh, geo tubes. Um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, one other thing I want to mention, um, is that what would be helpful is before you start. If you could give your name, you know, just, just like, um, just like Julie did. And, uh, also if you have an affiliation or an organization. That, uh, you're speaking on behalf of or who are, you are affiliated with. So our next. Two. People who are commenting are Sally Bogart and then on that net, on deck is Nick Bogart. So Sally, we're going to unmute you at this time. So you can give your comment.
Thank you. I'm Sally Bogart. I'm a neighbor of Mrs. Berlin and I'm sympathetic to her plight. My husband and I live here full time and my husband's family has had a home on the bluff since the nineteen twenties. We walk the beach several times every week. Mrs. Berlin has two houses on the bluff. Neither is currently in jeopardy and with the receding lake waters, that is not expected to change anytime soon. However, the cabana is at risk and this could be protected by sandbags, but she finds them unattractive. The homeowners have urged Mrs. Berlin on several occasions dating as far back as last summer to consider sandbags. Or to look at other alternatives that would protect her structures without harming the beach. In fact, when the homeowner's consultant, Mr. Kogi came out to look at the location, he commented, oh, there are many alternatives here. The neighboring property to the north owned by the Russells installed sandbags in November, which have been effective in stopping further bluff erosion. The Russells offered to extend their sandbags onto the Berlin rough by Berlin bluff by twenty feet or so at the Russell's expense. This offer was not accepted. Mr. Rossborough said, and I quote, "We simply cannot build on a beach we do not own." "We, the homeowners, have never been asked if the solution could involve the prop common beach. We simply, Mr. Rossborough, have not been asked." "On the contrary, we have repeatedly suggested sandbags and we certainly realize that those would be on our beach." "But I think most of us would rather have temporary sandbags than a permanent wall that is ten feet high, a hundred twenty feet long with twenty-two cubic feet of riprat at the ends." "Mr. Rossborough shows lovely signs of a slide of a perfect beach." "Either this wall will engage the water and the beach will be scoured and destroyed." "Or the waters will not engage the wall enough to impact the beach and temporary sandbags surely would take care of this issue." "This applicant simply has not discussed with us any alternatives other than a seawall." Mr. Rossborough.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rossborough is aware that the Swift Lane homeowners are very divided on this issue. "We have many questions that have not been answered." "As I said before, one third of the ARC did not approve, one third of the board did not approve, and one third of the homeowners do not approve of this op project." "And while eagle was informed on January tenth that the board voted to grant Mrs. Berlin a temporary access agreement." "Please be aware that there is no written signed agreement with Mrs. Berlin at this time." "Necessary details have been missing, so only a draft exists. There is no final agreement. There is no written agreement. There is no signed agreement." Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next up person on this is Nick Bogart and then after Nick is David Miller. So Nick, we're going to unmute you, uh, if you'd like to make a comment.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm not a lawyer and I only recently read the controlling law in this case. Part three fifty-three sand dunes protection and management. I was struck by the deference that that statute shows to local regulation. Mr. Chamberlain's read some of it, but, uh, section thirty-three fifty-three oh four one says, "A person shall not initiate a use within a critical dune area unless the person obtains a permit from the local unit of government in which the critical dune area is located." Another passage which he did read was, "A permit shall be approved unless the local unit of government or department." "The department determines that the use will significantly damage the public interest on the privately owned land." "In the frequently asked questions section of your website." "It includes this advice. If your property is located in a local unit of government with a critical dune ordinance, you must obtain a variance for your project directly from the local unit of government." "And as has been discussed, uh, quite a bit, Chickaming Township recently did pass an ordinance that would prohibit the type of hard bluff armoring proposed in this case." "Sentiment as expressed in two public hearings was lopsidedly in favor of this ordinance." "And while that law has yet to take effect, I would suggest that there is good reason for eagle to defer to the judgment of the township board." "Particularly this township, which is unique." "According to eagle funded research by Professor Guy Meadows of Michigan Tech, Chickaming Township is alone in not having lost shoreline and bluff line over an eighty year study period." "Professor Meadows said Chickaming is, quote, 'The only stable shoreline we've ever been able to find,' end quote." "In his shoreline mapping of lakes Huron, Superior and Michigan." "Chickamings two thousand sixteen shoreline and bluff line are virtually the same as they were in nineteen thirty-eight." "There has, of course, been erosion since twenty sixteen, but that erosion is not, in this case, threatening a residence. The Berlin homes sit well away from the area impacted by last summer's erosion." "In fact, when Mr. Rossborough showed you the cabana and the damage that had been done, you really have to squint hard to see the Berlin home in the background. It's way up the bluff." "Only a screen cabana, a wooden deck and the bottom end of a funicular track have been at risk here." "And even that risk is receding as lake levels go down. I live on Swift Lane. I walk that beach several times a week. I keep an eye on this." "I, I don't dispute that the, these ancillary structures hold practical and sentimental value for Randy Berlin. I am sympathetic to that, but the proposal." "Put before eagle is a sledgehammer poised to dispatch a mosquito." "It will put a Leviathan permanent structure in place to combat a temporary threat that is very likely no longer an imminent threat." "To approve such." Thank you. "To approve such a proposal despite the wishes of township authorities and the people they serve would go against the spirit of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act." "And the deference that it shows local government. I urge denial. Thank you."
Thank you for your comment. All right. So next we have, uh, David Miller and then after David is Anthony Schur. And I'm not sure if Anthony was able to get back on. Or not. But next is David Miller. David, we're going to unmute you and then you'll be able to mute yourself to give your comment.
Thank you very much. Uh, my name is David Miller and, uh. I will submit some written. Thank you very much. My name is David Miller and I will submit some written comments dealing with some of the legal issues that have been raised and some of the scientific issues that have been raised. I have some background in both areas. The thing I just like with to underline is some of the Chickaming residents' comments, which led to the concerns and the great time and effort that's been spent by the citizens of Chickaming on this hard armoring issue. And I was fortunate for two years to work as an assistant to the Cherry Beach Committee when they garnered support from over nine hundred people and organizations across twenty-nine states of the United States. All of people that have great fondness and affection and in many cases, a number of letters with, with great memories across many generations of time spent on the beach. And the, the Chickaming Township is defined by the charm that we experienced along this little piece of the Michigan coastline. So I live in Sawyer because of Cherry Beach. And I, I verge, I urge strongly Eagle to deny this permit. Mr. Rossborough did a great job of presenting the bona fides. He is just wrong on the science. He is just wrong. So thank you for listening and again, I urge rejection.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Anthony Shearer. Is, are we, was Anthony able to call in?
Yeah, he should be able to unmute.
Anthony, you should be able to unmute yourself. Okay, maybe we can come back to Anthony. Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, good. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My family has been coming to this area for almost a hundred years and we've seen the lake go up and down. We are concerned with this application because of the impact it will have on neighboring properties and the environment. The comments have been made that a stream will be directly next to this wall and inevitably will be affected. The flowing of the waters along the coast are affected by walls of this type and will inevitably impact the beauty and value of those properties. Unless these issues are addressed, and I, I didn't hear them addressed in the opening, clearly this will have a long-term and negative impact on all of our experiences at Lakeside. And I would like to register my objection to the application and request that the Berlins look at their application again, perhaps working with their neighbors more than they have so that we can all enjoy what is a truly unique environment. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment. All right, next up is Ellen Reagan and then followed by, and then on deck would be Ian Ram. So Ellen, we're going to unmute you. It looks like you're unmuted. You can go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I'm Ellen Reagan, a member of the Lakefront Preservation Group. It's a citizens group of four hundred and forty-five individuals in Marion County and beyond that have come together to advocate for southwest Michigan's natural resources, which are threatened by the recent escalation in hard armoring. Thank you, Eagle, for affording us this opportunity to speak. I will be very brief. The property in question is located in a designated critical dune area and will thus have an impact on a natural resource the state has identified as particularly vulnerable. Michigan stated purpose for creating the Critical Dune Statute was to balance for present and future generations the benefits of protecting, preserving, restoring, and enhancing the diversity, quality, functions, and values of the state's critical dunes with the benefits of economic development and multiple human uses. Accordingly, the state wrote into law that individuals wanting to build a structure, lakeward of the dune crest in a critical dune area must apply for a special exception permit to do so. We're asking that the special exception be denied in this case. The applicant has not considered other less impactful alternatives to a permanent seawall and riprap structure which will be built lakeward of the crest. In addition, the structures they seek to protect are accessories, a cabana and a funicular, which should not qualify under either a practical difficulty or human health and safety concern under section three five three one seven of part three five three of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. The homes were not the original impetus for applying for permit and are not endangered at present. With lake levels now receding, we believe that seawalls and boulders that jeopardize natural resources to protect accessory structures when the applicant has not pursued alternative solutions that would not interfere with the quality, diversity, and function of a critical dune should not be granted the special exception required in this case. Thank you. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. So next up is Ian Ram and followed by Peter Van Nice. So Ian, it looks like you're unmuted and you can go ahead with your comment.
Thank you, Ryan. Name's Ian Ram. I live in Chickaming Township, not too far from this proposed seawall. I too have private beach rights. And like many other members of this community, over the past year, I've learned more about hard shore armoring, littoral drift, public trust, high watermarks, et cetera, than I ever thought I would want to know. But it's been interesting and, and myself and hundreds of others in our community have come to realize that hard shore harmony, armoring, whether it's a seawall or a boulder revetment, is just bad for the environment and, and very likely damaging to neighboring properties. Not to mention the character of Chickaming Township. I realize this has no sway on Eagle's decision here. But the fact that Chickaming passed an ordinance banning these structures should however end this application. But I, I'd like to take the remainder of my time to speak directly to the applicant, Mrs. Berlin. I know your family has been great supporters of this community. And this includes the Chicago area, Indiana, and Chickaming Township. And that, that respect for a community is really well appreciated. And you should know that the ordinance that bans hard armoring was the result of a year-long engagement by this community to hear the different sides of the beach erosion question. Close to six hundred people signed a petition opposed to armoring of this type. Additionally, hundreds of people showed up to multiple township meetings asking that these structures be prohibited. And only a few people spoke in favor of armoring, among them people who feel they have a monetary interest in promoting armoring such as realtors and seawall consultants and engineers. The overwhelming view of the community led to the ordinance being passed.
You have one minute left.
So although you have every right to be concerned about your cabana, a community-friendly approach would be to withdraw the efforts to build a seawall and instead work with the township to install a GeoTube sandbag solution, which is the compromise that Chickaming Township reached to satisfy all concerns. And it's a solution that attempts to minimize permanent environmental damage to your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, so the last person on my list is Peter Van Nice. And then, and then after that, we will go to people who have their hand raised. So Peter, it looks like you're unmuted and can go ahead with your comment.
Thank you. My name is Peter Van Nice. I own property adjacent to and down lake to the south from Swift Lane where Randy Berlin has property. I oppose the granting of a permit to begin construction of a seawall, a hundred and sixty-foot, forty-foot seawall. And I oppose it because I believe that it will create beach erosion on, on my property to the south. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, so it looks like at this point we have four people, four participants with their hand raised. And I'm just going to go from the top. The first person is Andrew Brown. Andrew, it looks like we unmuted you on our side. If you could unmute yourself, you're able to give your comment.
Thank you very much. I've lived in Lakeside since nineteen sixty-two. Our family's own property on the lake and I respect, all the comments have been made. It's very informative and very helpful to have all this input. And I too walk the beach several times a week and have observed the different things that have been built over the decades. And I am going to take a more unpopular position and I do support the Berlins. I've seen hard armoring go in with steel walls with rocks in front of them and people have opposed this currently and they might have opposed it in the past, but there was not as much discussion about this in nineteen eighty-six and eighty-seven. And when those steel walls and rock revetments went in, they served to protect those properties and they did that very effectively. And they did not harm the properties to the north and the south. They protected those properties that were in danger. And then when the lake level receded, the sand blew in, covered those things up. They were not, an eyesore, they were not a problem in any way. So the notion that any sort of revetment should be removable, to me, is absolutely ridiculous. The notion that sandbags will be magically removed when the, the sand dunes replenish themselves is, is equally ridiculous. But I like the fact that that revetment is being allowed. I'm, I'm not opposing that. I'm just suggesting that the Berlins have a right to protect their property. That right should be, should be respected and it should be allowed and I'm in full support of what they're going to do. And I would address a comment that was made earlier by the Glavins. I'm aware of the type of revetment that was put in. Back in the seventies on Cherry Beach was a very flimsy sort of revetment made out of wood and flimsy wood materials. The Berlins, thank you, thank you very much. What the Berlins propose is something that's far more substantial and very attractive. And then when the sand and the, the water recedes, the sand dunes will replenish themselves and this will be covered up with sand and it won't be an issue. I think everybody's getting worked up over something that is, they should be allowed to do. And when the sand dunes replenish themselves, this will be covered up, just like their sandbags will be covered up. And we'll all move forward in a very, in a very good way. I'm in full support of the Berlin project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, the next person we have to give a comment is Martha Stevens Gingrich. Martha, you should be unmuted on our end.
That unmuted? Hi, I'm Martha Stevens Gingrich. My family has owned property since nineteen twenty-three in Michigan, in Lakeside. And we're neighbors of the Van Nices. We have over time lost our pump house, many stairs, many stairs over time. And we go with the flow, that literally, no pun intended. Now that the lake is receding, I don't understand the need for any type of hard armoring. I also don't think that it should even be considered unless someone's home is in danger of falling off the dune. The Berlin's homes are not in danger of falling off the dunes. I urge rejection and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, next is Rich Ham.
Thank you. At last week's Township Special Meeting, Dan Coffey quoted the Township's hand-selected expert, Guy Meadows, who is a legitimate expert to be sure. And in the quote, Meadows said a noteworthy thing in, in response to Dean Ray. He said, quote, "I, I think we could all agree that if the revetment is not in contact with the water, it will do no damage." Let me just pause there for a moment. Is that statement consistent with the way this conversation has played out? Both at the township level and among concerned members of the public? The answer, of course, is no, it is not. If you've been paying attention to the conversation as the township has orchestrated it, you probably thought otherwise to Meadows' comments. Is there a middle ground? Meadows was asked. In response, he describes middle ground that would allow revetments but would entail certain requirements related to beach maintenance if and when needed and also mentions the use of sand bypassing as a means of minimizing any impact in times of high water and corresponding crisis for lakefront owners. Now, this all sounds to me like the starting point for a potentially smart, fair, and balanced policy discussion. But this is not the discussion we've been having in Chickaming Township. Instead, the township has gone nuclear adopting a police powers ordinance, not a model zoning ordinance, selling us the notion that conditionally allowing the temporary use of sandbags is somehow a compromise which considers lakefront owners. But when pressed, the township has refused to even discuss publicly the nine-hundred-pound gorilla in the room. What happens when sandbags aren't enough? Of course, the ordinance, the ordinance itself answers this question. They're saying,
One minute.
Thank you. When, when sandbags aren't enough, lakefront properties need to fail. But that's a hard thing to say out loud and so the township has avoided this question altogether. So as to the matter at hand, the applicant wants to protect her property with an installation on her property. Her proposed installation is completely landward of the ordinary high watermark. She is willing to pay to do this. If better policy were in place, perhaps there would be specific aspects of this particular design that the state or township would ask to be improved or modified prior to approval. In the absence of such policy, I can only support the applicant here. This permit should not be denied.
Thank you for your comment. Right, next up is Douglas Grief or Gruff.
Hi, Doug Gruff, Sunzen Road. I, first of all, I want to second Ian Ram's comments. I thought they were very good. And I just want to make one point. The proposed seawall is the worst form of hard armoring there is. And the science is very clear. There seems to be confusion about whether a wall is in the high watermark or whatever. What has been shown in other localities around the country, if you put a seawall in, in the bluff, even if it's forty, fifty feet in, in other locations away from the water, the hard armoring such as the proposed seawall will affect the natural dynamics and forces of the beach and will negatively impact the beach over time. And I conclude probably destroy the beach. It may take years. It might even take a decade or more, but the effect will be negative. This science has been discussed and presented in the proposed Sundan Revetment Project in the Chickaman Ordinance Meetings. I don't have time to go through all the science, but the point I want to make, the science is very, very clear. A seawall is the worst form of hard armoring. And if you get unbiased academic scientists who've studied this, the science is clear and they will show that this type of armoring has a negative effect. Therefore, I think the permit should be rejected. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. All right, next up is Tom Rubin. Tom, looks like you're muted on our end.
Oh, now can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I actually wasn't. Great. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I actually wasn't, I'm planning on speaking this evening, but I put some questions in the Q and A and. For some reason they were not answered, so I want to get to those. But first, I just want to start by saying that my wife and I live on Swift Lane. And are directly and immediately impacted by this proposal. This is an unusual. Application, I would think even for Eagle, because. The applicant who wants to build the seawall doesn't even own the property that is adjacent to the lake. In fact, all the homeowners on Swift Lane, including my wife and I, you heard from Mr. And Ms. Bogart. This evening and others do. And we have grave concerns as expressed by our neighbor to the south, Mr. Van Nice. About the impact of the wall on the property that we own, lakeward of this proposal. But what I wanted to. What I put in the Q and A and what I want to raise right now is a concern about one of the answers. That I, as I read it in the application for this permit. The question reads, provide documentation that the proposal complies with applicable local zoning. As well as state and federal laws. This does not go, might, might, the question that I have does not go to the new hard armoring ban. Which is obviously directly relevant to this. But to other aspects of Chickaming zoning law. That the answer provided by the applicant. Did not address. In fact, the answer. The applicant provided was simply, there's nothing in the township zoning ordinance addressing piled seawalls. Of course, that's not responsive to the question of whether other. Local Chickaming zoning law is implicated by the proposal. So specifically, and this is the question I put in the Q and A that was not asked. I want to raise three provisions, at least three provisions of Chickaming zoning law. And I'd like to hear the applicant explain. Whether and how the proposal is consistent with them. And why the answer that they provided on the application did not refer to them. And those sections of Chickaming zoning law. Are section 5.01 C2. Which relates to fences or barrier style construction within 150 feet of the ordinary high watermark. Section 7.02 C about accessory structures. And 8.04 A. Which says that nonconforming structures. Shall not be enlarged, extended or structurally altered. We have had a conversation. Thank you. We have had a conversation with the Chickaming supervisor. I know that Chickaming, again, separate and apart. From the new hard armoring. Ordinance. Has concerns. About whether. This proposal. Would fit under the zoning laws of Chickaming and he does not believe. That it does. And so I'm curious how the applicant. Would answer. And address these provisions. And why the answer was given in the application. That said that there's nothing in the zoning, Chickaming zoning ordinance, implying that nothing is implicated by this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Alright, Laura Malkin is next on the list and at this point she's the last person. Does her hand raise, but feel free to. To continue to put your hand up there if you have a comment. So Laura, it looks like you're unmuted and you can go ahead with your comment.
Yes, thanks. My husband and I are Swift Lane residents. We are in the homeowners association and neighbors of Mrs. Berlin. We oppose the wall for many reasons. One is. The extreme heat. That was described to us by Phil Rosborough, who as you know is the applicant's project coordinator. He told the homeowners association and I quote, it does appear that the temperature will not exceed that. Of a black asphalt parking lot in the sun, which can be somewhere between 40 to 60 degrees higher. Than the air temperature. 60 degrees higher than the air temperature in the summer is easily 150 degrees. So they're proposing 150, 120 foot long, 10 foot high. Steel wall that's 150 degrees on the beach. Effectively roasting us on the beach. I don't think this can in any way be construed as in the public interest. Or protecting human health and safety as Eagle described earlier. So. As Nick Bogart said, I think this is quite a good example of using a sledgehammer to kill a mosquito. It has really no sense at all and we urge denial. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Alright, next up is Laura, I'm sorry, Ellen Walsh. I don't know if you'd like to make a comment. It looks like you're unmuted on our end.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Thank you for having this hearing this evening. I. I am with the Lakefront Preservation Group. Lakefront Preservation Group, as mentioned earlier, is 445 individuals. Interested in the preservation of the natural shoreline along the southwestern Michigan coast. And for that reason, we have supported the armoring ban that Chickaming Township. Just passed and the associated moratorium. We also support the alternatives of sand filled. Structures to protect. Properties along the shoreline. And believe that they provide adequate resistance to the waves to protect these structures. I'd just like to make a comment about the comments that continue to be. That as long as a revetment is on dry sand and does not reach the water, that it does no harm. My comment is that I believe the entire purpose of putting a revetment in or a wall in this case. Is to withstand the forces of the water when they reach that structure. So if. The expectation is that at some point the water will rise. To meet that structure. At that point, the scouring will occur, the wave flanking will occur, the downdrift damage will occur. If scouring occurs at the front of this particular seawall. 120 feet long. It does severely impact the future. Existence of the common beach. Lakeward of this wall, which belongs to other people. It does, it is not on the private property of the applicant. And if I were a member of that particular association, I would be very concerned about that. So I just would like people to remember that. The whole point is to address the situation when the water levels are high and it. And it is at that moment when water is touching those structures that the damage that is well documented will occur. Thank you very much. I oppose. The permit for this application and I support. Soft, short term. Temporary structures like sandbags to protect this beach house. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment? We will. I just leave this open for another minute. Okay, we have. Julie Owens. Looks like you're unmuted on our end. If you would like to give your comment.
Hi, thank you. I'm Julie Owens. I have a beach house in Frankfurt, so I'm not part of the Chickaming Township, but I am part of the Lakefront Preservation Group. And I have, I think it's really important that we keep our beaches for the community. Even if it interferes with an individual landowner. It's been well documented. That revetments do cause damage to the neighbors. And you know, it's interesting that you're not even allowed to let stormwater move across your property onto the neighbors. And so there's, you know, no good reason to let people put steel and rock on our beaches. And if this. Is an effort to put up. A revetment. In advance of the water approaching the property. That seems like a very. That really contravenes the point of the statute, which is to protect. The natural resources of Michigan. And so I hope that won't be allowed as some kind of. Way for individual landowners to get around the. The statutory permit requirements. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else? Who would like to give a comment or make a statement for the record? On this project at this time? We will. You know, go through a little bit more information here. As far as. Other ways to submit an official comment. Again, we had talked about these, these methods a little bit earlier by my waters. By email. To Zach Chamberlain's email and then by mail. Which is listed here. And again, just to reiterate. You know, if you have something. That you think of afterwards or want to elaborate on your statement. Can comment period for the public hearing will be open for 10 days, which is January 15. And I'm still not seeing any hands. So I would like to invite Zach to make a closing statement.
Thanks, Ryan. I just want to reiterate, there was a typo in those slides. The comment period will be open until the 12th of March, not the 15th of January. Apologize for that. I didn't catch it earlier either. So I will read the closing statement now. Thank you for your comments and cooperation. We appreciate your interest in the proposed project and that you took the time to be here tonight. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you may submit additional written comments until March 12th, 2021. Following the close of the public comment period, we will consider all comments received and make a decision on the proposed project. Just a reminder though, that may still want to submit a comment. Comments can be submitted via my waters, email or US mail. The hearing is now closed. Thank you again. And Ryan, if I could, I just want to clarify one point that was brought up. Earlier before I let people go. There were a little, there was a point brought up about lug and department or local unit of government and department. In the part 353, the Sand Dune statute. The Sand Dunes Law was originally written so that local units of government could assume permitting responsibility. Power when they do not want to assume that responsibility, the department or Eagle. Is the, or enforces that law. So in most cases in the law, when you see locally in the government. You would interchange those with department. It can be kind of confusing to read, but just wanted to clarify that point.
Thank you, Zach, for the clarification. Now for any closing comments, I'd like to invite Kyle Alexander.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify one thing based on a number of the comments that we received during the the informal period and throughout. Understanding that we haven't made a decision on this, this application before us yet and the decision will be coming in the next several weeks. There were a lot of comments regarding the ordinance and kind of questioning why Eagle was even. Entertaining this application. With the, with the township ordinance in place. I just want to reemphasize that the existence of a local ordinance alone. Does not relieve the department of our obligation under law to process applications submitted to us. I think that's important to understand. Additionally. Applicants under 353 and really all of the statutes that the Eagle oversees. Are always responsible for ensuring that their projects or any activity is that they. Carry out on their property are otherwise lawful. Considering laws and regulations that that we don't have jurisdiction over or are not in Eagle's purview. Just wanted to make sure that that was understood by the group. Otherwise, just wanted to thank everybody for for participating tonight. We. We always appreciate the the large amount of participation in these public hearings.
That's it. Thanks for the clarification, Kyle. And I've left Zach's contact information up there for a little while now in case. We weren't able to get to your question in case you have further questions. But I'll just wrap up by saying, you know, just reiterate, thank you for participating in this process and for calling in tonight and I. Hope everybody has a great evening. Thank you very much.